But we are back in public session and this is an opportunity for public comment. I know we have one public comment. Is there any other public comment this evening? Mr. Hill, you're welcome, sir.
Thank you. Where should I sit?
Whatever comfortable chair you have.
Just tell me where to go because I'm not very steady on my feet.
Yep. Tell me where I should be.
Whatever you'd like. Take a comfy chair. Take a comfy chair.
Thank you very much.
And grab the microphone so that it is recorded.
Yeah, we can. I should hold this? Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening to the board, our esteemed board members and everyone at home. Glenn Hill, homeowner, 22 Tucker Road. Polte Homes wants to build 100 homes on Liberty Lane. They've reduced their plan by saying affordable housing percentages, commercial residential mix and dimensional requirements in existing zoning don't work for them. They now seek to convince the town to change zoning yet again and condition their project on the town and voters' spending to Polte's financial goals. The zoning amendment sought if passed gives Polte and all who follow even more relief from zoning regulations they don't like and perhaps even test the inconvenience of having to include affordable and age restricted homes in their project, thereby undermining the purpose, letter, spirit and intent of the Norfolk Housing Production Plan. I hold in my hand a copy of the Certified Norfolk Housing Production Plan. The Polte project does not support a single goal in this plan. The Polte project does not support a single strategy in this plan. The Polte project does not support a single five-year housing goal or strategy in this plan. The project also seeks to skirt Norfolk zoning requirements that require residential projects of six or more units to feature affordable units. This project is great dear for Polte, but a terrible one-sided unfair and bad deal for the master plan, the housing production plan and especially for those seeking affordable and age restricted housing. One reasonably seeks to know who benefits from this project. It's not low to middle income home buyers and it's not seniors who need age restricted housing. When a town proposes zoning amendments on behalf of developers, it evets to bring in development that does not support town plans. One reasonably asks how and why plans are needed and how do these plans not become meaningless? As the board hears Polte tonight, I ask the board to remember the effort that went into getting Norfolk to a realistic achievable housing production plan. A plan that is undermined if the Polte project goes forward with a zoning amendment that releases them and all who follow from plans the town carefully calculated and voters approve. I ask the board to consider whose interest is truly being served in a zoning amendment that sets back the housing production plan and creates no affordable nor any age restricted units in Norfolk, both of which are desperately needed and both of which are called for in the housing production plan. I ask the board to consider bearing true faith and allegiance to the purpose, letter, spirit and intent of the Norfolk Housing Production Plan and to town planning documents and to demonstrate these commitments in all actions with respect to housing proposals. If the board chooses to do so, it will start by refusing to calculate a zoning amendment on behalf of Polte and will instead insist that every new housing project fit under the housing production plan and carefully calculated town planning. Should the board choose not to do so, the question then becomes what use, if any? Is the zoning, the master plan and the housing production plan? Finally, the town of Lexington is profiled in the Boston Globe today where they rebuild 150 affordable units. If Lexington can do it, so can we. Thank you very much, honored members of the board for this opportunity to speak before you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments for the seat? Seeing none.
Oh, is there? Did you have another?
No, I think he's trying to help Glenn.
Okay, okay. All right. All right, next on our agenda.
So the next agenda is consider approval of change of hours for Carvana. I know the board recently just did this. We just changed their hours to eight to six, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. They realized after their change that, you know, there was some substantial business on Sunday. So they are now asking again to change their hours and just to allow them to be open on Sunday now when the last change was just Monday through Saturday.
Any questions?
Nope.
I have neither.
Yep.
Do I have a motion to approve the change?
Sure. I move that we approve the change in hours of operation for Carvana LLC for their Class II Auto License to include Sundays from 8:00 to 6:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. I will do this with Justin if you'd like. All right, we need to vote to waive the public hearing for renewal of a Class III license, auto license for Norfolk Auto Repair. I assume Mr. Roche, you will be recusing yourself from this discussion.
That's correct, yes.
Michael Berg, any questions?
No questions.
Okay.
I was going to jump right to the motion.
Great.
I move that we approve the waiving of the public hearing for the renewal of the Class II Auto License for Norfolk Auto Repair.
I will second. Any further discussion?
Class III, sorry, Class III. No further discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I would too, sir.
Do be noted. Justin, back to you, sir.
Yes, well, another sort of annual end of business item is the approval of various directional sign permits. And so this is an annual process. We charge $5 per year per sign for businesses that include Cable Land, Dunkin', Donuts, Gulf Subway and Fort Kick Sports Complex. We've reached out to all those businesses to make sure that they're interested in having those directional signs and they all do.
I'm going to jump in if that's okay. So I went down the rabbit hole as the internet will let you do sometimes and I look at, I think $5 for fees, that seems really low. And I know we've had previous conversations about increasing our fees and I Googled like, oh, this town does this and this town does that. And so I, we can't change it at this last time because the businesses need some notice. But I'm hoping that we can make our fees more concurrent with what our neighbors are doing in terms of signage.
Definitely noted. I think we talked with the board as we're looking at a variety of our fees in terms of in the, you know, select boards office in terms of, you know, licenses and different things within the office and which would be something that we definitely look at for in our nature.
Awesome. Other than that, I had no questions or comments.
I have a motion to approve?
I move that the board vote to renew permits for directional signs for the following businesses: Cable Land, Dunkin' Donuts, Gulf Subway and the Fort Kick Sports Complex for 2025.
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Good.
The next item on the board's agenda is a variety of licenses and alcohol beverages, common vixxer, entertainment, you know, other licenses. So this is an annual process that we do. And these were renewed for January 1st. This work is managed by Julia Lozardi in the Select Board Office. She does a great job, you know, coordinating with our relevant, you know, public safety officials as well as the businesses. So, you know, these are, there's nothing new or added to our list, although we did recently add another, you know, taxi license for mobility. So, you know, if the board were to do it, I would just note that whatever motion you craft should make it subject to receipt of all the required documentation inspection payments because we do, we do have a few outstanding payments we need to apply.
If agreeable with the board, we will vote them as printed in the agenda.
That's fine.
And so if someone would like to make a motion as we go through each of these items.
All right, I'm going to lump them. Ready? I think this is okay. Amanda will stop me if it isn't. I move that the board approve and execute all liquor license, common vixxer license, entertainment license renewals, Class I, II and III Auto Dealer License renewals and Taxi License renewals for 2025, subject to the receipt of all required documentation, inspection and payment of fees as printed in the agenda.
If I make one friendly amendment, there are a couple of items that Mr. Roach has to recuse himself from. So if I, we're going to have to separate those out because he needs to recuse himself from that vote or recuse yourself from all of those.
The whole vote, yeah.
Was you, is you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, then we can do that. So I have a motion?
Yes.
I second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Recused from the vote.
Very good. That's probably the quickest we've ever done that.
It is.
A good deal.
We could spend a half an hour reading 86 names, but I think that's a more efficient way to do it. All right, sir.
So the next item in the board's agenda is the considered approval of appointment with chief assessor. We recently appointed a treasurer collector. There are bylaws, points of process. The board of assessors have to give a recommendation. The finance director has to give a recommendation. The town ministry gives a recommendation. The select board ultimately has to, you know, make a decision on that recommendation. I'm pleased to give a recommendation of Chris Minshaw, who is here with us today. I know she doesn't like the limelight. I'm going to invite Mrs. Minshaw up here. She's provided a lot of great service as her deputy assessor here for, for the town. And I'm very proud to, you know, offer my recommendation to her as chief assessor. She's done great work so far and I believe she will continue to do great work in this new role.
I just wanted to say thank you and I look forward to continuing the work that we've been doing for the last six years in the assessor's office. So unless you guys have any questions.
No questions, just a comment. We're thrilled that you're still here. You've done an incredible job and I know you're going to do very well in the new position, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
So we need a motion to approve the appointment? Do I have such a motion?
I move that we approve the appointment of, oh, I'm losing your name now.
Chris Minshaw.
I'm just, I'm a visual person. There we go, right there. Let me try again. I move that we approve the appointment of Chris Minshaw as chief assessor to the town of Norfolk.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Enthusiastically.
Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome again.
Well, not welcome, but congratulations.
Glad you're here.
The next item in the board's agenda is the considered approval of intermunicipal agreement with the Metacomic Public Health Alliance Collaborative. So this is a proposed agreement that is associated with the towns of Rantham and Franklin and shared with Norfolk. The board of health is approving it, actually at this point probably had approved this contract already. There are really no issues that were highlighted to me from their administrative assistant or Mr. McCarthy. For just the general information of the board, the town budget is about $35,000 for sort of these services that operate in and over this agreement. $15,000 for environmental services and then $20,000 for nursing. We get substantial grant amounts. The final figure, I don't have the final figure yet. Mr. Kevin Sweet, who's sort of the director of that, has recently left Rantham. So we're going to have a new executive director there, Mr. Matt Tanis, who I know the board knows very well. But a grant covers a significant part of those expenses, which includes sanitary and other nurses' expenses. Council also looked at this. There are no concerns. We think this is a worthwhile endeavor. It clearly is a benefit that we enjoy offering to our residents and benefits.
I had no questions on it.
No, I only have a comment. I feel like all of these things that we're taking the opportunity of where we're partnering with other towns are a real benefit to our community. And I don't know if our, the person on the street knows how much those grants really help us to get this kind of work done at a much more affordable cost. So thank you for your work on this and I think it's a great opportunity for us to continue to partner with these communities.
Yeah. I have a vote to approve? Vote to approve?
I move that we approve the intermunicipal agreement with the Metacomic Public Health Alliance Collaborative. Do I need to give you, yes, and authorize the town administrator to sign the contract on our behalf?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want to take this one for the introduction of the goal setting workshop? Or do you want to?
Let you take the lead on it. Well, I actually, it really doesn't matter. I think we're all in this one together. We had, I could remember when, I think it was October. We have a tradition of getting together and setting our goals for the year. They also flow downstream, if you will, to some degree to the town administrator. We this year decided to focus more on tangible goals, ones that we can actually touch and have some influence on. All too often, these goals become very sort of altruistic. They're too high level, they're not meaningful. They sound good, they're good sound bites, but they're not really something that we can touch and measure. So we were trying to identify items that were in our ability to manage. There's, people always look at the board of selectmen and think we run the town. We really don't. The voters run the town. And we only really influence about less than 30%, 35% of the budget. You know, the schools have two-thirds of the budget. So we, there are limits to what we can and can't influence and we only have one person that reports to this board and that is the town administrator. So we do not have any authority over any other department. That is all through the town administrator. And it's important that we respect those boundaries and that we work within those boundaries. So our goals were focused with that in mind, to try and do that. So, and Mr. Beckenburg, I will start with you if you will read the first goal.
Absolutely. For the select board goals, our goal was to explore opportunities to enhance citizen engagement and involvement. And that had three bullets underneath it, to establish quarterly community meetings with citizens. And Mr. Lehan is going to take point on that. We're going to explore community education opportunities to building stronger community and I'm going to take point on that one. And we're going to explore establishing a Fourth of July Parade and Mr. Roach is going to take point on that one.
Just a comment on the bullet I'm taking. We will be holding, we used to do this. We're going to get back to it where we hold TV shows. No, no one wants to watch more than 25 or 30 minutes at best and we understand that. But they'll be designed to talk about current issues that are before us, that are under our board and informational issues that may be under other boards as well, without judgment, just informational. And we will try to do that probably every, at least every two or three weeks. Definitely once a month. And it will involve the town administrator and may involve other guests. Would like to get the planning board involved in some of the issues they're dealing with. We're going to try and be informative as best we can. And I think Norfolk Cable is probably the best way to do that. So that's what I will be undertaking.
And then mine is sort of contrary to Jim's statement about wanting to be, have something more tangible because mine is definitely much less tangible. We're going to hear later on that we're readjusting our calendar for our goals so that lines up more closely to elections. So mine is to explore community opportunities because we're going to be looking at goals again in June. That gives six months. So most of that time, I'm going to be looking at what other communities are doing and exploring opportunity. We have had some division in Norfolk and look at opportunities that are not only educational, but maybe playful to bring us back together in a way that's healthy and good, like, like our beloved Norfolk is. So mine is a little broader and more, it's going to be more research based between now and June and then we can, and have more concrete steps beginning in June.
Mine is just to bring out your Fourth of July Parade to try to bring the community more together. We had a 125th parade not long ago and I think it was a huge success. And I think if we do it every year on the Fourth of July, the first year might be a little small because everyone goes away because there was nothing in town. If we bring some to town, it's going to bring a reason for people to stay home and get involved, so.
And everyone loves a parade.
Yeah.
We also want to continue to support small businesses and economic development. This is a perennial bullet that has always been part of the board, but I would say that we probably can do a lot better. And comments this evening and other comments we've heard play into that. So we're going to spend a lot more time working with our brotherly boards, if you will, and sisterly boards, I should say, to try and enhance that and do whatever we can to help that development.
And to piggyback on that, I think we'll take some of Ms. O'Brien's expertise there to do some leadership in that role. I'm excited about that.
Absolutely. One other one is we're also looking at some of the bylaws that we have and some of the way we administer things don't always, they're by history as opposed to functionality. An example of that is the town administrator's evaluation. That evaluation really should be done, and we've made this change, by the way, in the King Philip School Committee as well. That evaluation should be done while the existing board that has worked with the town administrator has an opportunity to give that input. That has not traditionally been the case. So we're making that change that the town administrator and we're looking at other ways as well, that those evaluations are done by people that are in place as opposed to someone that arrives on the board that has no background, which is the case what happened with Mr. Roach this year. He arrives on the board and two weeks later, we ask him to do an evaluation on someone he hasn't spent any time working with. That's just not fair and it's not meaningful for either party. So that's one of the changes that we're going to be making as one of our goals as well. Finalizing the select board and TA goals with newly established timelines. Again, that fits into what I just described. We want to also take a look at our own bylaws regarding town meeting. This has been something that's been talked about for some time. The current process is that the advisory board reads all of the motions in town meeting. That's not the case in most towns and we think it is, and it's our bylaw. So this would require bylaw change. But we're going to recommend that the presenting board should read the motion. So if it is a motion that is coming forward by the board of selectmen, we will present the motion. Advisory board will then comment with their opinion, which is what the advisory board should be doing, as to what they believe is relevant to that board. And so we're going to recommend that change. We've talked with the, I think you've talked with Mr. Lutz and he's in favor of the concept or certainly willing to discuss it. We've talked with the moderator who also favors the change. So we're going to bring that forward in the town meeting also because it just makes more sense that the board that is advocating for that article should be the one to present the motion. So that's one of the changes we're hoping to make. Town administrator goals. I'm going to let you talk about those a little bit, Justin.
Okay, I think for us, there are a couple of new goals, but there are some goals that we did have in place before. And as we mentioned, it's sort of goals that we are able to do on an annual basis and then we obviously review them on a quarterly basis. So for my goals from what the feedback I've received from the board, finalize the ClearGov implementation. So we've implemented a capital improvement plan book. Obviously, the finance director and department heads have been very monumental and sort of developing that book where, you know, we've got good feedback regarding that. We want to do that for an operating budget book as well as a transparency portal, getting that back on the website and getting that up to date. So Mr. Lindmark is an important part of that process, but I'll work with him and make sure we do that this year. We've talked about implementing fiscal guidelines previously. This was part of our discussion with sort of our bond reading agency. This is something that the board has talked about previously about. So this is something that we'll explore with the board, obviously working with the advisory committee and our finance director. But to have some sort of guidelines to sort of direct what Norfolk's funding structure looks like in the future, et cetera, and just how decisions are made. We talked about providing training for boards and committee members. You know, we haven't provided training for boards and committee members and that's something that I think I've received feedback from committee members as well as department heads. So we're going to provide some training for those members and I'm working with our town council to do that training and memorialize that, provide as sort of for new members as well.
Can I make just a comment on that?
Absolutely, yeah.
This is a really important item to us and we're guilty of not providing the type of training that we should for people that come on. We're all volunteers, all of us. And there are rules of engagement around every board that are different. And especially when you look at, for example, the zoning board of appeals. That is a, almost a judicial board, a semi judicial board in the way it handles down its issues. It's important that they understand all of the necessary rules of engagement associated with that. Ethics, you know, all of the considerations and there are a lot. So we're going to be sure that we do a better job at providing each of those board members opportunities to receive that appropriate training and we will use our legal counsel and outside sources as well to provide that. And we should have taken the lead on that sooner. We're, we're going to, that's a really very important issue for us.
And that's a good point. I think a few weeks ago, we had ZBA training, training for the ZBA and it was pretty helpful and we received good feedback from the ZPA there. So we look to expand on that for the other boards as well. You know, I think we've identified that procurement is something that we need to get a little bit stronger in it within the organization. So one of the goals is develop a procurement policy and provide training to personnel involved with procurement. So that's something that is really important for us and that's something that we're really going to prioritize moving forward. And then we're going to start, I think the chairman and the rest of the board implemented, taking a look at current bylaws just to see how we can do things a little bit more efficiently and effectively. It's been a while since we've taken a look at our bylaws. You know, there are some that, you know, we wonder why they're in place and so forth. So we're looking at cleaning that up and just trying to make a town organization a little more effective and efficient. So we'll work with that. We'll try to secure some grants or anything to help with that process. And then one other thing is I know how important it is for the board to that, you know, all of our department staff and all the staff within our organization get performance reviews. So, you know, obviously having annual department head review, at least on my end, is so important and that will be a part of my, our goals for this year to make sure everybody has that, you know, performance review.
So I want to thank my two partners in this and Justin when we had our goal setting. These are very different than goals you've heard from the board of selectmen before. Not, not meant to be critical of any board or anything at all. It's just that we wanted to really kind of bear down and find things that we could tangibly touch and implement and influence. And that's what we've tried to do here. There are broader range goals that we have not identified here that are always on our plate, like fiscal responsibility, managing budgets and all of those kinds of things. But we kind of viewed those as givens and not something that we need to restate because that's just part of the deal. So if we're in agreement, we need to vote approval of these goals. Are we in agreement?
We are in agreement.
I have a motion to agree with, to approve these goals for the board.
Move to adopt the select board and town administrator goal?
That's a much nicer motion than what I said. Thank you.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you both for contributing to that. It was, it was a good session. And Justin, you as well, and Kate, you were there as well. My apologies.
Okay.
The next item on the board's agenda is introduction of our treasurer collector, Mr. Dan Vasenti. He's here. I know, and Dan, come on up real quick. I want to take the opportunity, I know the board, the board recently approved that recommendation once again from Todd and myself. He's been here for a couple of weeks and he's continued to return. So that's a good thing right there. But I thought it'd be a good opportunity for residents who don't understand the position or Dan, just to have an opportunity to be introduced and formally welcome him to our team. He's been a great addition so far. Pleased to have him. So I wanted to provide the opportunity for him to just introduce himself to the board.
We met by accident today. Nice to see you again. I knocked on his door.
Yeah, as Justin said, my name's Daniel Vasenti. I come from State Street. I was there for nine years. Past five years, part of their global billing organization where I led the Latin America billing space as the global billing lead. I've been here for two weeks. I've enjoyed my two weeks. I'm learning a lot. There is a lot to learn, but I've gotten the support from my team, Karen and Sarah, as well as Todd and his team. So I'm looking forward, I'm excited for the path forward. Yeah. Thank you.
Awesome. Welcome to Norfolk.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Thanks for opening the door today.
Absolutely. Door is always open.
There you go. No, it was locked.
The front door, the high door.
Nice to have you on board. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Close to taxi.
Thank you.
All right, sir.
And then the next item on the board's agenda is a presentation from the Polte group regarding a project on Liberty Lane. So Mr. Essek Petry, who's from the Polte group this year, to, you know, give us sort of a preview of this project. And then I'm all, I'm going to have Mr. McCarthy after. I'll just talk, give you a high level.
Anything? Anything?
Second.
Sure.
All right.
We have the TV remote and we can change the source on that or? You got it. Okay, all right. Nice.
There we go.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
So you want to just test it and just go to the next slide? There we go. We're good.
Beautiful, awesome. Thank you again. Again, my name's Essek Petry. I work with Polte Homes of New England, joined here by Brian Beck, also with Polte Homes of New England. And just here to talk about a project that we're looking at in Norfolk. So just a little bit initially about Polte Homes. Polte Homes of New England is a wholly owned entity of Polte Group, which is a publicly traded national home builder. We have 26 divisions throughout the United States. As I mentioned, Polte Homes of New England is where, where I work and we are based out of Westboro. We've been in New England since about 1994. And importantly, we are completely self-funded, so we are not dependent on any outside financing. So when we come in and build, we are financed to build and complete a project. Our reputation is key to our success. I grew up in Massachusetts, as did many of the other members of our team. So we're well aware of what a small town community mass is, Uh, we're well aware of what a small town community mass is, especially central and eastern, uh, mass. People from neighboring towns talk to each other. We share, uh, experiences. At Polte, we pride ourselves on, uh, nurturing po- uh, positive and transparent relationships with municipalities. Our homeowners, uh, and our neighbors where we do business. Uh, we have a number of ongoing projects that are listed up here. Uh, in the area and we encourage you to, uh, reach out, drive through any of them, or if you have any peers or friends that live in. Um, the area or work in any of those communities, um, reach out and, and, uh, ask about their experience working with us. Again, it's critical for our success that we develop, um, strong, positive relationships in these communities that we work in. We're also, also every, all of these are listed on our, um, website as well. If anyone's interested and you can get more details, um, on each of those. Uh, before I dive into the details of the project, just to quickly, um, speak to a few of the partners, um, that'll be members of our team as well. Uh, Bowler Engineering will be, uh, doing all of our site design and civil engineering for the project. MDM Transportation is based out of Marlborough. They'll be handling all of our traffic impact analysis for the project. And, uh, VHB is doing all the natural resource identification, uh, and impact analysis, uh, for the site. So for those that aren't familiar with the site, um, the screen on the left, uh, shows that the project is in town center. Very close to where we're sitting here right now tonight. Um, and on the right, you see that the parcel itself, uh. It's a couple of different parcels, the site itself surrounded by Meeting House Road and Liberty Lane. And then the MBTA parking lot, uh, to the east and then kind of up the hill, but south is the Meeting House, uh, Village. The site itself totals approximately six acres. Uh, it's pretty flat along Liberty Lane, um, along the beginning of Meeting House. And adjacent to the MBTA lot, uh, but as you go up Meeting House Road from Liberty, the slot kind of, uh, excuse me, the. Uh, slope kind of goes up towards that, uh, the peak where Meeting House Village sits. And really the topography of the site kind of creates, uh, a sunken area down at the, the front by Liberty Lane. Um, really, so from a topography perspective, it's actually a great site and the, the homes at the back, they're roughly forty feet above. That Meeting House Village from where the, the level is down at Liberty Lane. Site is currently, uh, located in the recently adopted business core of the B one town center zoning district. Uh, per the master plan, the B one district was adopted to, uh, attract additional mixed use development in the downtown area. Uh, and we do strongly feel that the pro- the program that we're looking to introduce, um, aligns with the intent of that district. Uh, however, there are, um, uh, some guidelines that prescribe the makeup of that district. And coupled with some other, uh, restrictions, uh, on the site that I'll talk about in more detail later that. Um, make a financially successful program kind of prohib- prohibitive. Um, we've been working with town officials to identify and approach. And a program that could be mutually beneficial for, uh, the homeowners, for Polte and for the town of Norfolk. So this is a, a planned view of the program that we are, um, currently looking at, just as a initial concept. Uh, as mentioned, the site is about five to six acres total. Uh, the program that we are looking at includes two. Four-story residential buildings with fifty homeownership condo units, uh, in each. Uh, each of the residential buildings are made up of one and two bedroom units, uh, and they each conclude a garage under. Vehicular access would be off both Meeting House Road as well as, uh, at the end of the Liberty Lane cul-de-sac. Uh, the program also considers commercial retail space, um, uh, along the street front, along Liberty Lane. Uh, the retail, commercial space that we've included in our initial concepts. Um, was influenced by the pizzeria right next door, as well as the Walgreens building, um, directly adjacent to that, um, uh, next down Liberty Lane. And so what we're he- what we're showing here on this concept is three separate, uh, commercial retail buildings, each of about twenty eight hundred square feet. Totalling eighty four hundred square feet. Uh, but this is just one concept of what that, um, that, that. Could make up, could look like. Um, so it's just really, uh, demonstrative of what that space could look like from our retail commercial perspective. Uh, we are proposing to connect to municipal sewer that's located, uh, Liberty Lane and Meeting, Meeting House Road. Um, via gravity to a downstream pump station that would then send the wastewater to the Meeting House Road wastewater treatment plant. Uh, we've had several meetings with Blair and his team at DPW and are, um, confident that there's sufficient capacity remaining. To accommodate, uh, the program that we are looking at in this concept. Uh, additionally, there are a series of drainage structures and easements located on the site, uh, which as I mentioned are. Um, pretty restrictive as far as areas that can be constructed on the site physically. Uh, but we are confident that, um, this strategy that we've developed here, um, appropriately manages, uh. Our project stormwater, uh, as well as, um, accommodates and respects the easements and structures that are existing on site today. Uh, this is a rendering of the architecture that we have created specifically for this site. Um, as I mentioned, there are challenges associated with this, uh, site. Uh, and coupled with those, uh, drainage restrictions, um, one of the, um. Zoning changes that we will be looking for is currently it's, it's a, there's a three-story, uh, limit. This is a four-story building. It does sit under the, the, there's current restrictions, three stories and forty six feet. This building is less than forty six feet. Um, and doing that was creating the mansard roof. So the fourth story is, is in that roof structure. So. The building is less than the forty six feet, but it is a, a, a four-story building. Uh, this was a unique design for archi- our, our architecture team, something different than we've ever done before, but. We're really happy with the look of it and the feel of it, and we think it really does fit well with the, um, with the other architecture and the, the buildings, uh, directly in the area. And we actually had our engineering team put together a few renderings, um, of this initial concept to kind of help visualize the structures. Uh, on the site itself. Uh, so this here is a view from the corner of Liberty Lane and Meeting House Road, the existing in the top left. Uh, and then the proposed on the bottom, you can see, uh, the retail commercial structures along Liberty Lane. Uh, providing a nice buffer at the pedestrian scale, uh, from the residential buildings, uh, towards the back. And then this view looking up Meeting Hou- Meeting House Road towards Meeting House Village, um, really, um, just helping show that the climb of Meeting House. Road, um, really helps, uh, minimize that contrast with the, the pedestrian scale of the residential structures. And then this is a view from the top of the hill, up at top of Meeting House, uh, uh, village, um, looking down towards the site. Uh, again, really just demonstrating that, that significant height difference. Again, it's about a forty foot, um, uh, difference in elevation from. Uh, the roadway at that, uh, location down to Liberty Lane and, and, uh, the, the elevation of what the, the buildings would be in their first floor. So that's really, um, it's a very quick, high-level, uh, presentation. Just wanted to introduce our initial concept to the board and. Um, open it up to any specific questions you may have or anything that I may have missed or glossed over. If you'd like to get into any more details, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Alright, thank you. Thank you. Could we get a copy of this, by the way?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, we have Mr. McCarthy and the chairman of our planning board, Mr. Peck with us. Do you, would you gentlemen like to join us? Um. Any thoughts that you or input you might have? Chad, can you grab? We're technologically challenged here this evening. I apologize.
I hope we can both share there.
Nice to see you.
So Chad Peck, chairman of the planning board, uh, one of the questions I did have, and I don't, didn't see it documented in there was. What was your proposal on affordable housing?
So that's something that we are still looking at and working on, um, and what would make sense, um, you know. To us that we've seen was, is ten percent, uh, affordable. So that would be, um, ten units, um, there. Of the hundred that we are proposing in there. Uh, but it is something that, um, we're looking to work with the town, um. On what that actual final number would be and balancing that. Right now, I believe it's a twenty percent requirement as well as there's additional. Um, ratios between commercial and retail that all those items coupled together, um. Are just make it not financially feasible for this. So, uh, the number, at least initially at our, uh, outset would be a ten percent, uh, affordable.
Are you, um, Chad, are you familiar with what happened with Gumps Farm?
I am not.
Uh, there, there has been another Polte project in town, as I'm, I'm sure you may know, or I think it's Spock's Run, I believe that's what it's called. It was a joint project between Norfolk and Rantham.
Yep.
A similar issue occurred regarding, uh, affordable units. And, uh, it was the point in time when we purchased Gumps Farm, uh, which is where the playground is now. That was formerly Gumps Farm.
Okay.
And I believe it was about a sixteen acre lot. And, uh, we did negotiate with Polte to come to a very. Uh, agreeable arrangement to get the affordable housing components into the town. I won't go into the detail right now, but I was. Part of that at that time and, and still have actually the documentations on it. I will get that to you. Chad is just a potential opportunity as how something like this might be worked out because that one. Met the need of affordable, very much so. In fact, it became quite advantageous to both parties. It was really a great deal. And, uh, uh, financially and for housing and I mean, everything about it was a win-win. And if we could work out something like that, um. I'll, I'll share it with you, but it was agreeable to all parties. There's always solutions if both parties are willing to look deep enough for it.
And, and absolutely, that's what we're looking for at this point. You know, what we're presenting here tonight is a very initial concept based on kind of what we see out there right now. Um, the existing situation, like we said, uh, is challenging and, and, uh, ideally there's a, there's a ground in between that, that was beneficial for all. And we, we look forward to finding that.
Well, I will, um, I, I'll get together with you, Chad, and, and we can, I'll share it with you, but.
That's fantastic. Yeah.
It, it was a good deal for everybody.
So in terms of the, um, exceptions that you're looking for, it sounds like you're looking for an exception in terms of the percentage of affordable housing. An exception in terms of the height of the building. Were there any other exceptions?
So the affordable, based on the twenty percent, yes. The height, it would be a story, just to be, uh, exact. The height we actually are. Comfortable with. It's a forty-six foot height, uh, but the three-story, um, is, is, is what we would be looking for to a four-story. Um, and we're still going through some of the details of the zoning language, but there, um, is some language in there about the ratio of. Commercial to residential requirement that, um, this, um, we have to go in and see if it meets, meets it exactly. Or what that ratio could look like. There's also, um, language in there that I think that we've. Talked about as far as whether it needs to be in the same structure or not. And I believe that we're comfortable that we, we're, we're good with. It doesn't need to be. So we'll just be looking at that ratio.
So by meaning you're good with it doesn't need to be, meaning that this is still in, in keeping with the zoning.
Sorry, yes.
In the spirit of it.
Exactly. You know, the, the way that the, the bylaw is written as far as the, how the commercial and, um, residential is, is cited on site. Um, it doesn't feel that though it has to be in the same structure. So we're comfortable with that and we feel that this follows along with that piece of it. So we would not need any.
And so those in terms of the bylaws, everything else seems to be all set.
Uh, I, I.
Just at first blush, I know we're, we're in a first conversation about this.
Yeah, those are the, those are the major, um, components that we're, we're looking at, um, so, but. Those are the, the primary ones that we want to address, we look to address.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Chad, what, where are you in the process with this?
Uh, we're just at the beginning stages of it, um, so same as you. We're just getting started. I mean, this is the initial concept. The renderings, thank you. Those are very helpful to see.
Yeah, they were.
You know, very interesting to see how it does because that is a very unique property in town because you have such elevation in the back. And so it is kind of like, uh, kind of a bowl almost. And so, um. So it is interesting to see that large building, which is larger than our current zoning, how it fits into there.
I know the capacity that's left up at Meeting House Road have, um, what percentage of the remaining capacity would your project be using?
I don't want to speak for the town, so I can't answer that. Oh, what I can say is that in our conversations with Blair, he was comfortable that. It could accommodate, um, what, what we would, um, what we would need. Okay. I don't, I can't speak to what would remain.
I would say approximately would take the remaining usage of the, uh, capacity available. It would leave a little small capacity.
But not a lot.
Okay. Not a significant.
Yeah, I'd heard that you had sufficient. I didn't know if there was any leftover.
Yeah, and, and, and also just to be completely blunt with it, that, that res- the, uh, commercial retail is, is, um, yeah. It's, it's not prescribed, so that could adjust a little bit of what that, um, would, the draw would be as well. Still, we're confident that'd be within what's there, but as far as what would potentially be remaining.
My, my reason for asking that i- is that this town is sadly lacking a restaurant. And, uh, the size of the restaurant is very dependent on septic.
Yep.
And the use of that Meeting House Road facility for a restaurant would be very, very positive consideration for capacity.
Yeah, understood. And, uh, that's. I couldn't speak to the.
No, I, I know, I know.
But I, I understand that.
You have to pardon my, my, my mind functions in strange ways.
No, no, it's, I appreciate that. Yeah. You know, from our perspective as well, from the.
It's something I think we'd all love to see is.
It would be amazing.
To find an opportunity to put a restaurant in there.
That, that was, um, significant feedback on the master plan.
I know.
To have a walkable downtown, same thing on the B one committee, a walkable downtown restaurant, a place to go. Get a bite to eat, get some ice cream, you know, what, so it's, yeah, it, it's definitely, the community wants that.
I was thinking the penalty box is a good title. What do you think?
Yeah, okay. Ask another question. Um, this is brand new, so I absolutely, in the. In the understanding that this is brand new and we're still at the idea stage, we did hear from one, um, community member who was interested in age restricted housing. Is that something that you have considered in the proposal or you said?
Currently for this proposal, we are looking at, at, uh, no age restricted for the site.
And is there reasoning behind that in terms of your, um, your organization?
Um, honestly, we felt that it was a better fit, um, for this site, for, um, for an, an all, an open age community, uh, in this location.
Awesome. Thank you.
You, you mentioned one and two bedrooms in your presentation. Will there be any three bedrooms?
Uh, no, that is not proposed, uh, as part of this.
Okay.
It's a, it's almost fifty fifty. It's twenty seven two bedrooms and twenty three one bedrooms in each building.
Because that influences your clientele.
Yes, sure. Yep.
And also it impacts, the impacts on the community, such as schools.
No, I, it was, it was a rhetorical question.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that. And, and as part of, um, kind of any next steps, we would be producing a fiscal impact. Analysis that would include, um, you know, examples from other similar communities and provide that. Detailed data to, to the town as part of our, uh, program.
Great. Justin Penny.
No, I don't have any problems. I think I wanted Rich to really talk and really briefly, high level that, you know, it's something. That we're looking for in the area and not just.
We got one comfy seat left, Rich.
Yeah, to, um. Add some context to, to Justin's point is when we did the, uh, the B one study a few years ago. We looked at the zoning in, in town center. At that time, there was some aspects of the zoning that we weren't able to, um, get into and make adjustments to in terms of. Unlocking and provide an opportunity for mixed use development town center. And as we've moved forward since twenty one, um, this use case, if you will. Uh, and there are other ones in town center, me, excuse me, with some of the property owners. That there needs to be some adjustments to, to make those, uh, sites happen. This happens to be a vacant site. Which is in one sense challenging, but another not so challenging. Some of the other properties in the town center are already developed. So tho- in those situations, we're looking at maybe redevelopment and some redevelopment, some tear down. So this is kind of enlightenmentist in terms of, look, there's other properties when in the center. Of town that need to look at the zoning that applies them as well. So it's not. Just focused on this development proposal and this site. It's going to be as part of this analysis, looking at the center as a whole. Um, for example, one of those. Is when we talked about the, the bylaw allows for separate residential, commercial. But when you apply mathematically, there's a footprint piece to it, which doesn't make. That feasible. So they kind of internally conflict. So that's something that's been identified that would be to take a look at as well. As well as there are some sites in town that may lend themselves where they could be. For example, on Liberty, um, excuse me, Main Street, let's take, for example, where the, the hardware store was. You know, we talked about hopefully getting more sewer to the town center. If that were to happen long-term. if that site were being redeveloped, where the building face would be at grade along Main Street, you could tuck parking underneath it as it drops down towards the railroad station. But the way the bylaw is written, it's first floor total commercial, so you know, the front half may be commercial, the back might be residential, so the those kind of things, when we start to apply it, where we're looking and say, you know what, to to realize the vision, we need to make some some changes to be more flexible and respond, so this is kind of bringing this forward, but there are other projects, and the last one I'll touch upon is the Boric Plaza. That was approved, as you know, as a forty-B, um, thirty-six townhouses. That developer, knowing that we've been looking and focusing, trying to create more mixed-use, is following this process, because if possible, they may change from a forty-B to a mixed-use under a zoning to be able to accomplish both. So that's another opportunity that we might be able to have as we go on, and so while we're talking about this particular site, just want to keep in mind that we are looking at those other sites.
Is there approval, I know it's been more than two years, is their approval expired, or is it?
It hasn't, no, they they got an extension on it, and actually, there's a, the the legislature passed another extension for permits, so it's been extended for a while.
I didn't know that, okay.
But they purposely, in terms of how this discussion's been going on for about a year, year and a half, and, you know, along with the master plan. And for me, speaking to them, say, hey, is there something we could maybe do differently? They're at least engaging, so we're trying to see maybe if we could make something of that as well.
So the the the, my English interpretation of what you just said is that that you guys are looking at these zoning changes holistically.
Yes.
And not site perspective, but looking at the whole area, what do we need to change to incent the right development that is collaboratively similar? That we don't have to look at this individually lot by lot.
That's correct.
That'd be a good thing.
That's nicely said.
Yeah. Yes, that would be, and it is, is that goal to be for the May meeting?
That's the.
Gonna try? That's the goal, okay.
And um, yeah, we'll see where we're at, but that's the, that's the goal.
Great chat, thank you, you guys got some work to do.
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Any other questions, Justin, anything?
Nope.
No?
Thank you.
Kate, anything?
I appreciate you coming forward.
And you'll get us a copy of that?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, actually.
Oh, okay.
So we'll make sure we. Oh, you do already actually have it, so.
That was very quick.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and.
Thank you for joining us this evening, thanks, Chad, Rich, thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Chad, can you and I catch up to maybe tomorrow, or if you're around, or at your leisure, you're you're employed, I'm not, so.
Friday work?
Huh? Friday works, you got it. Thank you. That was very informative. Alright, Justin, before yours, sir.
Sorry.
General updates, town administration.
Yeah, I don't have any updates for the board, unfortunately.
Great report. Uh, anything else from the board?
Um, I just wanted to mention that the town hill looks gorgeous, and so, blank card DPW for that, they do amazing work every year, and this year, you think, oh, it won't be the same, and it's just as magnificent, and thank you to all your hard work, it looks amazing.
Mr. Roach?
Oh, wait, we should talk about the Santa Parade was awesome too, and thank you to Alliance for sponsoring that parade, a really excellent um community event for our.
And I understand you were successful in driving and not a single injured pedestrian was hurt.
He sat with Santa in the big chair.
Uh, Dustin, anything else?
No, sir.
Alright, we need to uh approve the warrants.
I move that we approve the warrants as listed in the agenda.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And approval of minutes?
I'll make a a motion, we approve the minutes of the November sixth twenty-four meeting, November twenty-twelve twenty-four meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any further business before the board?
No.
I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
No, I need the motion first.
Okay, make a motion, we adjourn.
Second, second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.